Welcome to the May 22 school board meeting. Would you please join me for a moment of silence? Thank you. Would you join us for the pledge of allegiance?
The special treat tonight, we said Daniel elementary, it may be a first, but we have four.
Thank you guys. Next, we have approval of the agenda. I need to add an item under technology. Uh, I need to add COPSS grant under technology D1. We have any other changes or additions to the agenda?
Move to approve as amended.
Have a motion to approve the agenda as amended and a second. Any other discussion? Vote please.
Six yeses.
Motion carries. Next, we have approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. Dr. Collins, would you tell us what the changes are?
The, the meeting, the April meeting, I believe are correct. It's the, um, E, the March 27th. Yes ma'am.
Thank you.
I'll move to approve the April minutes.
You have a motion and a second to approve the April minutes. Any other discussion? Vote please.
This is the April.
Madam Chair, just for the record, that's the, we're voting on the board minutes for April 8th, special session and the board minute for the April 24th regular session.
That's why we had two votes.
No, th- this would be the one motion, the one motion for the April 8th special and the one motion for, and the s- in the same motion, the April 24th regular, which would be separate than, from the March ones that we want to correct.
But we voted twice for the April, correct?
Okay. I have it recorded. Six yeses.
Thank you. And next, we have correction of the March 27th.
In the March 27th minutes, I, um, accidentally put Dixie roofing as the winner of the, um, bid and the correct winner was Maxwell roofing. And so we need to change in the minutes, um, to Maxwell roofing instead of Dixie roofing.
Phil, this is just a question about my computer and my voting. It is, um, it says your electronic vote is not being transmitted. That, that was the one about April 8th? Did you get my yes vote?
It seemed to act a little odd on my end too. I thought it was me. Um, yes, I got you as a yes on that motion.
Move to approve the amended minutes.
We have a motion to approve the amended March 27th board minutes and a second. Any other discussion? Vote please.
Ms. Phil, yours is still yellow. Does it still say the same thing?
Um, let me. It says there's a problem reporting your electronic.
I can verbally, um, record your vote.
Yes. I'll try to go out and come back in.
Six yeses.
Motion carries. Next, we have public comment on actionable items. Thank you, Ms. Hall. Next, we will move to recognitions.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I would like to recognize Mr. Shane Thompson and Brian Fuller. Both of these gentlemen have successfully completed all training and met all local, state, and federal requirements to become bus drivers.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I would also like to recognize friends of Dixon County schools, Dr. Wesley Allen and Ms. Pat Manley. Would you come forward, please? Ms. Pat Manley is a retired teacher from Dixon County High School, but she has continued to influence students even in her retirement and help us out. Uh, Dr. Allen, I want to shake your hand. I'm going to let you speak in just a moment, but we appreciate. We appreciate your partnership and Ms. Pat, would you just talk about Dr. Allen and the work that he is doing with some of the students that he brought? And then, Dr. Allen, would you just talk just a minute about your work? Ms. Pat, thank you so much for your work. We appreciate you. Dr. Allen, tell these, yes sir, tell, tell the board the fine work that you're doing with students in Dixon County.
Okay, so, uh, many of you may not know me. I grew up in Dixon County. Uh, I graduated from Dixon County High School in 1979. From there, I went on to Vanderbilt and majored in chemistry, math, and physics. So that's my love. Spent 11 years in California, uh, getting a PhD and being a professor at Stanford. But then in 1994, I moved back to God's country, University of Georgia, and I was, uh, there until, I still am there, but am now formally retired. Uh, in 2019, my father, my sister, and I started the Allen Heritage Foundation in large part to honor my mother, who was a longtime, uh, teacher in the Dixon County Schools. We have a suite that we own in the office complex right across from Dixon Middle School there. So we have offices and actually a laboratory now with some laboratory equipment. Um, Allen family has been in Dixon County probably at least since 1850. Um, and still owns some original farm land here. The interest we have in our foundation align with our three founders. Uh, for me, it's STEM education. My sister has been involved in mental health counseling, uh, for the school system here as well. And my father has spent, uh, much time on mission trips, uh, in poor countries abroad with interest in medical services and school construction. So tonight, I just wanted to mention our Allen Heritage Scholars Program. I think it's unique. Uh, it's a program in which we take exceptional students, anywhere from eighth grade to 12th grade. We try to keep them as long as we can. And the deal is if they do a 50-hour research project undermined direction, it might be actual research or some learning project. If they complete that, then they get a thousand dollar scholarship that year. And they can keep renewing this and leverage it for bigger scholarships. And they can spend that money for any educational expense now or later. We've given away, uh, over $42,000 in the last five years, uh, for that. We've had projects in physics, chemistry, mathematics at all levels, engineering, anatomy, physiology, medicine, microbiology, astronomy, forensics, computer programming, and anthropology of all things. So that's been, uh, wonderful for me to be involved in all of those. Uh, and these students have been achieving things I think not witnessed in Dixon County for a long time. Uh, Mrs. Manley has been a very important part of our program. Uh, I should recognize the Goodlark Educational Foundation for generous support of our work as well. Now onto the good stuff. I brought three students tonight. Uh, the first one is Evie Stidl. Evie, raise your hand a little higher. She's completed projects in computer programming, chemistry, and multiple levels of mathematics. She's worked most diligently in mathematics, and she's done something I think is unprecedented in this county. Uh, in each of the last three years, she has been top 10 in the state in the statewide TMTA mathematics, uh, contest. Now, that's a little bit of an extrapolation because this year's results won't formally be announced until September. But last year, she was the equivalent of second, and she made the same almost perfect score this year. So I'm pretty confident that my statement is correct. So she has been competing for state championships, okay? And, uh, I remember, was it 1988 that Dixon won the state football, uh, championship? And there was so much excitement, someone hung a banner on the overpass, the interstate, said, "Last one out of town, turn the lights out." Well, we ought to be doing that for this young lady the next time she competes for a state championship. Send her a police escort, uh, banners, et cetera. Uh, but I'm extremely, uh, proud of the work she's done. Next is Nico Nosity, back there, Nico. Raise your hand. Uh, he's completed two projects. One was an engineering project. I challenged him to build a bridge we can drive a car across. But the restriction is there can be no supporting timber in there more than an inch and a half in diameter. And we were successful, right? We have the video to prove. It's a little two by twos, you know? Uh, get it close. We were able to build trusses and make that work. Uh, but then this year, uh, he won the grand prize at the Middle Tennessee Science and Engineering Fair. That's probably not been done in this county in 30 years either, okay? Uh, and he just got back from the International Science and Engineering Fair. His project this year was on microalgae, a variet that is very good as a health supplement, and how we would purify that from, uh, water. And finally, Maria Fuzzel. Maria, raise your hand. I hope she doesn't mind me saying this. She is the queen of astronomy. Dixon County. Um, her first year, her first project, she weighed the earth with a pendulum and a pole. Not bad for a ninth grader, right? Uh, she won several awards at the Middle Tennessee Science Fair. And then we got a little more sophisticated. I call it the Allen Observatory out on our farm. It's a And then we got a little more sophisticated, I call it the Allen Observatory out on our farm, it's a stake in the ground. Okay, we set up a theodolite and we followed the moon. And it has very fascinating, even mind boggling celestial mechanics. So that was her project this year, and at the Middle Tennessee Fair, she also won, uh, other awards. Uh, the Bernard Cypher Astronomical Society, first place, one of the top two Navy Science Awards, as well as third place in physics. So we're very proud of these students. Uh, we think they're going to go on and do great things, and they've been a delight to work with, so thank you.
Dr. Allen, can I get your photo with the students? And Ms. Pat Manley, we appreciate your work, uh, continued work and partnership because this is, uh, part of how students can be successful. I would like, Ms. Stidle, tell me what you made on ACT, I know.
Next, we have curriculum and instruction.
One of the things that we discussed at the planning session was the science curriculum adoption process. Tonight, we ask that you approve the science textbook list.
I'm gonna jump over that, tabled motion. Where we had tabled the C N N ten. We have not had a chance to talk about that planning session because Mr. Chag was sick, can we move that again? How do we need to handle that motion?
Should we, uh, move it to a walk session this summer, to be brought back up?
Well, I mean, I mean, you can, you can defeat the, I mean, you don't have to take it. You can defeat the motion to remove from the table, and it's still on the table, and you can talk about it at a work session at your convenience. Because it's on the table, subject to the call of, of being brought back, so.
We discussed it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, at the planning session, we brought to you the science curriculum. Uh, you have in your packet, um, the same information and the list, and tonight I ask you to approve the list uh, that Ms. Robbie, um, went over at the planning session. And you have that list in the handout. And then, before we leave tonight, everyone will sign this piece of paper once approved.
I move to approve the list as presented. A motion to approve the science curriculum list as presented in a second, do we have any other discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, Kylie.
Although we discussed, and, uh, some technology, what you seem to do curriculum, is any of these documents that were approved by that motion, um, being professionals found, is that a separate discussion?
That will be a separate discussion for one-time expenditures.
Thank you.
Just to clear up, I have the same question, no financial burden on this motion, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Vote please.
Six yeses.
Motion carries, next we have finance, the monthly financial report.
You'll see the typical monthly financial report. As far as revenues, we are up compared to last year, if you look at the amount. If you look at the percentage of the budget, we are down. Um, expenditures are the same. Um, property tax and sales tax are up. Utilities are up, diesel fuel and gasoline are both down compared to last year. And you'll see the summary level totals, uh, the financial statements for each fund, and then the summarized balance sheets.
Move to approve monthly report.
Second. Have a motion to approve the monthly reports in a second, do we have any other questions or discussion? We vote please to approve the monthly reports.
Six yeses.
Motion carries.
The next on the list is, are the budgets for one forty two, one forty three, and one seventy seven. As y'all know, one forty two is our federal funds, and so that's what's been approved in E Plan by the Department of Education for next year at this time.
Do you have any questions about one forty two? Kylie.
Are we seeing any impact from our federal funds, is our funding of the state would have to be in?
Our funding levels, um, at this point have stayed the same. This, the state actually loaded the same amount of, um, funds for each of our titles into E Plan for us to make our budgets. Uh, that won't be official until like October is the timeframe when they usually make that official, but that's what they've told us to plan on for now. Um, we did have some adjustments that we had to make, just the same as in the general fund budget. Um, the cost of things goes up, the cost of salaries and benefits go up. So we did make some adjustments in the, um, Title I budget specifically. But the funding amounts themselves, um, they've told us to anticipate the same.
With that in mind, if they remain the same, if we're within budget, all is well. But if, if there are any sudden changes in the revenue amounts, we'll have to adjust the overall budget at that point.
Correct.
Not a reserve fund for one forty one, it would be separate still. They may have to make some adjustments later on.
Correct.
Like, and especially the program to set them on two hundred? Basically, the budget went from a million and seven to a million and two.
I'll let Dr. Johnson speak to that one.
What, what number are you looking at?
Sorry, it's on page two.
It's seventy one two hundred.
And it's seventy one two hundred. I guess partly just making sure I'm reading it right. Because all the others, I didn't see, that's that one category, it seemed like. I didn't know if that's telling about funding or anything.
I don't know, when you look at seventy two to twenty, it's up, like, the budget for twenty four twenty five was originally like four hundred and forty thousand. And, uh, um, budget for this year is eight hundred and thirty four. So I don't know if that.
So it may just be shifting between those two.
It might be.
Got it, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on fund one forty two? One forty three. Cafeteria Fund.
I have the same question that I sent you about, well, I have some others, but about the summer feeding program, that's in our five-year plan. And I was trying to figure out how much that actually costs and which one item that's in. Um, and if we are getting funding for that, because I know under the reports that Governor Lee is not accepting the federal dollars and will be handling the federal funding in a different way. At least that's the way I understood the articles that I read. So I'm trying to understand what impact that's going to have on our budget.
What I know about that, Ms. Thiel, is the, uh, federal, uh, on the summer school, um, nutrition program, we have to support the schools that are Title I, and that's why we have summer school there so that we can support the school lunches. Um, and that's why you will see that every school, um, does not support the summer school because they're not Title I. So that's why all school, students go to certain schools. We, you know, there's a lot of unknowns out there, and so we are staying tuned to what is going to happen. But what we know that funding for lunches are based off of free and reduced numbers. And so that will continue. Uh, I, I feel that being that we have already received, um, what we know and appropriated for the summer school program, I don't think it will be changing this year.
Okay, and so when we are also providing bags for the community, how is that different from the supporting the Title I schools?
Do you want to talk, uh, Troy?
Sure, uh, one, we got a grant from Hope Kids Hungry, and that has helped us uh, establish some, uh, things, you may have seen posters and things out, to do that grab and go on Friday, uh, of June. Friday, grab and go, and we can give be reimbursed for just and seven breakfast, so we will be reimbursed for those. Breakfast and seven lunch for the week. One kid is getting a gallon of milk, a little bread.
So does that appear in your budget, or is that in the one forty two budget? Because.
That would be one forty three. When we, well, we would get reimbursed we can put it out, pay it upfront, and we'll get reimbursed.
So I just didn't see anything in the revenues that showed grants, so that's, that's why I didn't understand that, that part. Um, the other question that I had related to income for breakfast, that is increasing from one hundred and twenty thousand to two hundred and twenty thousand. And I know that's part of the five-year strategic plan that we're going to increase by forty percent the number of people that are having breakfast. But I just would like some additional information about how we're planning on doing that to generate this additional revenue.
Well, we're trying to have menu and, uh, a lot of offerings, more than just one, and, um, getting free breakfast for test time. Try and get people in and ratings so that they will participate.
This budget does have the proposed increases for the price increases that he'll talk about later under the nutrition section. So that is part of the reason why it's up as well.
How are we as a board, or how are you all as a team? Um, I'm just, I have the question about being over by a half a million dollars that will come from, I'm assuming, our general fund budget, so.
We have seven staff members that are quitting or leaving the district or retiring that won't be returning to the cafeteria. So not only will we be seven staff down, but then also he has proposed in this budget, or we have come together as a team, um, to take, or to remove like five days. So I think like cafeteria workers are currently being paid for two hundred days, so they would move down to nine, one ninety five. And we've compared this with other districts, and other districts only pay their cafeteria workers for a hundred and eighty-five days. And then their managers, like two hundred and five days, where we've been paying the managers two hundred and twenty days, so then they would just go down to two fifteen. So they would still see a raise, they just wouldn't see the full raise. Um, but they would also be working five less days. Um, I'd say Troy is working avidly on coming up with plans on how to sustain the budget. Um, we would not use general fund at this time to pay that because, um, he has enough in fund balance to cover it. But as you can see, I mean, a few years and that'll be gone, so.
I do have to commend Troy, uh, this cost expenditure has actually gone down since, um, we first started looking at this, um, um, cost for school nutrition. I think we have to get out, communicate, and, uh, have the families that qualify for free and reduced filling out the paperwork. Um, so Troy has, he's coming up with a plan of trying to get that paperwork in so that it helps the budget and, um, for the students that aren't paying for lunch, um, so that that takes that burden off that family. So communication is key, setting up, um, at different venues that we have. I know Troy, uh, this year we were at the Y M C A when they had their family day. Uh, just making families aware, uh, of what they can, um, have for their children in school if they fit the criterion. So we are trying to get out there, but I will say this cost has dropped significantly, and we are continuing to work on it as a team.
So initially, we're they're gonna see the raise, but they're not gonna put any more money in their pocket at the end of the day. I mean, that's the, that's the reality on it. We can fumble them words around all we want to, we're not giving our employees any more money.
They would, they would get They would get more money. Yes. Um, I think.
Is their W two gonna be higher this year?
Yes, yes. And they're gonna work hard.
How can you explain that? Um, if you don't mind, helping me understand that because they were going to get a thousand dollar increase. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so you are reducing.
Five days. So it's just five days for the year.
So it's gonna be minimal that they, that they see.
So if they're seeing any, just to clear it up, they make less than a thousand dollars a week. If we're cutting five days off of them already. And they're still gonna see an increase. That means they make less than a thousand dollars a week and there ain't no more children in here. So I'm gonna say that everybody in this room makes a lot more than that.
Thank you, Marty. Wrong.
Um, well, does this budget reflect the reduction of the seven people that you've referenced?
Yes, yes. That was about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars just in salary alone. So then you take that and you consider the benefits with the full-time staff. You consider the taxes and retirement.
Because like on the, the medical insurance, will some of these people, when you reduce the number of days, will they lose medical insurance?
No.
It's not.
No, if they're full-time, they still receive medical.
Okay.
The days would have no impact on their eligibility for benefits.
Okay. So have you put the six percent increase on this insurance amount or what?
Any other questions on fund one forty-three?
Those revenue go up is the only way to make more money is to raise the price of, of lunch?
Or have more people participate or have more free and reduced forms filled out and then participation.
All of those.
Well, are these seven people that are leaving, are they cafeteria workers or are they people in?
There's one manager and the rest are cafeteria workers. There is one person from the office that is also uh, not included in that seven. Cause I was just looking at the cafeteria personnel line item, the one sixty-five. Um, so I was not considering that, but yes, there is one worker at the school nutrition building that was also.
Because we have a lot of, um, I'm not saying at all that the amounts that we pay aren't within like the state averages. Um, but we have other things like other contracted services. We have other salaries and wages that are not included in the cafeteria personnel line. Can we get a better understanding of what those skill sets are that are being paid for in those other line items?
Yes, um, for like one oh five is obviously Troy. Um, one nineteen is the bookkeeper there. Uh, purchasing personnel, that's one person that is, uh, that is actually the VAALCO representative that we actually receive reimbursement from the other districts for. Um, we don't receive full reimbursement, but we're one of the, how many people in the?
Thirty-two, thirty.
So we just pay a small percentage. Um, then the cafeteria personnel, that would be all of the cafeteria managers and workers. And then maintenance personnel, that is one maintenance person there. And then the other salaries and wages that consist of two field managers, right?
Now, what are field managers, please?
They work and they prepare the menus and the recipes. They try to keep them.
They also fill in when there's absences.
Yes. If there's an absence, they will go to that school and.
Okay, thank you.
And then there, the other person in that line item is Tom. Can you tell them what Tom does?
Works with our point of sale. One thing, there's a lot of things that, that he works on, but. You making sure that it is sober weeks, thanks. Make sure there is a right.
Ms. Brogdon?
Yes, Mr. Parker?
Just one more thing. You know, I'm all about anytime we can give our employees more money. And I, I just, I've heard the administration say throughout this, especially this budget year, you know, we're, we're stuck to state law telling us to get our teachers at fifty thousand dollars by twenty-six. And we as Dixon County didn't wanna be at fifty thousand dollars. We wanted to be more than that at twenty-six. I've heard that time and time again. I feel like we're on track to go there, right? We're at forty, forty-nine, five, forty-nine, seven right now. So we're almost there. We're gonna go well and beyond that. And I wish that our administration and our managers would push that same logic to our cafeteria staff and our classified staff to say, I don't wanna be the lowest there either. Cause instead of giving them more money, giving them more money, taking more days away, doing everything we can to keep that budget down. If we would push that same mindset toward our cafeteria staff, toward our bus drivers, toward our classified staff, toward our maintenance people. And say, we don't wanna be the lowest there either. We wanna go up on our, all of our staff. And I'll be quiet about this one forty-three.
Well, we would love to do that. Troy can speak about that cause he told us about it when we were in budget talks. Um, but he mentioned how it's not really gonna be much of a benefit if you give them raises like a thousand, two thousand dollars for the year. But then you have to remove half the people in the cafeteria and they're having to do twice the work and not getting twice the money. Um, so I think that's the predicament that we're in and the cost of food just keeps increasing and our revenues aren't. So.
We have increased that actually, uh, but we've got to continue to get the numbers in. We have increased, uh, those filling out those forms just due to making parents aware. Um, we even set up a kiosk at places for them to actually fill out the paperwork there on site. Um, so we will continue to push that and get innovative. And that is one of the charges for Troy, um, and his staff to think about how we navigate those waters. Um, for those students to, uh, they're not going hungry. They are eating. It is getting paid for the food, um, and getting that paperwork filled out so that we get those revenues in. So that we can continuously work on our pay scale for our nutrition staff. They do an excellent job, uh, but we have coming in Valerie and I have worked on the schedule because it actually showed a million dollar deficit uh, last year. So we are getting it down. Sometimes unfortunately, it's those hard decisions that you have to make um, to get that um, where we can work with that and move it forward. Troy, do you have anything to add?
No, uh, we're, you know, we have, uh, one thing that the data puts out is what is called bills per labor hour. And it shows the amount of work that a school actually each person does to, to provide a bill. So this faller to the school, and I know that, uh, they talked about faller to the school. Put someone there. Makes their bill per labor hour go down. Labor hour means that, uh, we try to keep everyone. Bills per labor hour. It's called for school. Sometimes, uh, we've got two schools right now. That's below ten. Means if you're working at that school, you're only making nine bills per hour. As far as another school making fifteen bills per hour. But we have to have someone at the school. Uh, so that's what we're trying to work. And whenever we're talking about not caring or things there, moving people around. That's where we're making the moves. We're seeing if they're below fifteen bills per hour, we're trying to move those, uh, try and get them up to. Those are the things to consider. And, uh, I know that, you know, two of the smallest schools, they're both below ten. And, uh, that's why we took a manager. They used to have a manager for each one. And, uh, one way to cut is we're now we're making one manager for both of these schools. And, uh, so trying to make cuts, but it's, it's instant pressure on the ones that, uh, are left.
Any other questions on one seventy-three? I mean, one forty-three, sorry. Seventy-seven.
This is likely to have to be amended depending on how many more purchase orders we issue out of the one seventy-seven fund. Um, but this is just where we're at at the moment and that's what I thought that I should present at this time. Um, but we'll amend as needed when the new year comes.
Do you have the amount? That we, this is the amount that we've just made commitments for.
Uh huh. So as far as the D C H S sports complex, that is not, that's kind of what the seven million is. Is because we haven't issued any kind of P O for that. So at the time, like I said, as of this date, this is what amount that we are at remaining that's not been encumbered.
Okay. Can you give, can you tell me the amount if it did have the encumbrances? The things that we've made commitments in a sense and what that number would be?
Let me see. Maybe round about seven hundred thousand, just a rough estimate.
That kind of falls in the scope of what we discussed when we talked about a budgetary for that high school project of contingency or development and design type money. I think there was roughly a billion two that we didn't really commit to at that point, billions like that. So are those expenses that you're speaking of kind of fall into that category?
Are they in there?
The, the seven hundred thousand you're speaking of would fall into that category of those type items?
Yes, yes. If we added anything on, yes. If they found anything in the midst of the project.
I expect with that sounds probably do is something found.
Probably.
Those bids should be coming in next month, six weeks. Working on them now, is that right?
Yes.
Carol, is that right? Need a motion to approve these?
Yes.
Motion to approve, all right.
I'll second. We have a motion to approve one forty-two, one forty-three, one seventy-seven budget in a second. Do we have any other discussion? Mr. Parker?
The one forty-two, is it different than what we did last month?
It's federal funds.
This is the federal fund. This is all federal fund.
Oh, you was general ones.
Yeah, forty-one, right. Yes.
That was one forty. I get my numbers mixed up. I'm gonna get it one day.
I understand. I, I just, I have concerns about one forty-three because, uh, I know I've heard you all say that you're working on it, but I, I don't know how I, I don't know what you do to make this better. Cause we do know that food costs continue to increase. Um, we know the federal government is requiring that you put in all of that information that you talked about that your tech person does. Um, but some way we've got to get this under control. And I don't know how, how we do that. And by just continuing to approve a budget where we're going over, I just have concerns about that. Cause I don't know, I don't know where the end game can, can be for us.
Well, what we know is this has always been a problem. And we are, as you've alluded to, trying to make some decisions to get this number down, which we have. Working together and we're continuing to do that. And as you've heard tonight, some hard conversations uh, that we're having with, you know, even having to lay off people, um, to eliminate positions. You know, one of the things I've been speaking with, with other directors around, you know, if we could get every family to fill out a form. If we could get every family to fill out a form, we would have what we needed. It's just getting folks to understand the power of what monies we could have for this district if they would fill out the form. Um, and so we're, we're trying and we're making that, um, we're making it available for them, helping them. Uh, but it's also a touchy situation. It's a touchy conversation, uh, for folks and, you know, the older the children get, getting things back such as that. Um, so we're gonna, we're gonna get innovative. And again, we have gotten this cost down. We're gonna continue to get it lower. So we're just, we're just gonna get innovative. If you have any ideas, please share, uh, with me. Um, but just getting the message out, uh, one of the things that we've talked about is getting our forms and a message out to the public library because a lot of people go there. Um, Ms. Andrea Bobian is making strides. Our students that are coming into kindergarten, understanding this opportunity. And so really, uh, talking to even our new families about the opportunity if they fall into this category for their children to have free or reduced lunch. Um, so. Um, so communicating and asking folks, um. More face to face to get these things filled out for the district and for their children.
Well, if it's the secondary schools that we're having. The biggest schools we've been talking about, I can, I would like to hear if, I don't have any real thoughts, but I. I hope you all can share some that you're planning on.
Yes, just communication and these forms have to be filled out annually, every year. And so that presents that challenge, but we understand that they need to, need to be filled out every year because, um. Family status and situations change. Um, so. Just getting the importance out to families and making, um, having families. At that level able to come here to this office, into the schools to fill out papers. Sometimes it's hard to understand. And so helping parents fill out that information. Here's what we don't have, we do not have family information. We just help them read the form so that they can fill it out the best that they can. Because they know their personal information. So, um, we're gonna continue to work on that.
And Chuck, can I share a thought?
Yes.
In this. It's just my, the way I process the food service budget. It costs money to feed kids. We have to feed kids. It's not like our general fund where sales tax revenues fluctuate. Or we have an M O E to meet that we know revenue is gonna be higher and we're keeping expenses down for those type reasons. It costs money to buy food. That changes, same way buying gas for the buses or things that are prices we don't control. So it's hard to do a budget. And it always be in the black. On this type of an item. But looking at the reserves, there's close to thirty percent reserves in that cafeteria fund. Twenty-seven, twenty-eight percent. But it's a, under six million dollar budget. So what you sell is always gonna be. Dynamic based on kids that come, do they eat at school, do they not? We're trying to guess how many kids are bringing lunch, how many won't. But fill those forms out is one aspect to get federal funding or state funding, but every day. You're gonna like they buy it, if you don't, they don't. Or do they pay for it? So it's never gonna be a budget that's gonna have. A profiteer stance to it, nor should it be. I'd be more concerned if we were taking revenues and chucking them back every year from food sales. It's always gonna be tight. And I think the tight budget. Keeps that department working pretty hard to try to, to balance it out. But well within any ranges of any reserves. As long as we're paying attention to that and working towards it. And not turning a blind eye to it, I think it will always. Be a moving target. Prices are huge, what we sell will always be working hand in hand. The employee issue is gonna be there. Costs is gonna go up, but we can't charge five, six, seven months a kid for lunch either. If, if, if we, if we lose a little money. End of the day on that budget, I'm happier than we are trying to overcharge that we'll allow for. The best bit.
Have any other discussion? Vote please.
Ms. Brogdon, yes. Mr. Chadwick, yes. Mr. Haley, yes. Ms. Lampley, yes. Mr. Parker, yes. Ms. Thiel, no.
Next, we have budget amendments. Budget amendments.
The first one y'all see is for one forty-one. So this is just for our summer learning camp grant and transportation grant from the state of Tennessee. So this is money in and out. So we spend the money and we request the funds and they reimburse us. It's kind of like federal funds, but then it's in GP budget.
Any questions about? That one? Okay. Motion to approve in a second, any other discussion? Mr. Haley?
It, yes. Doing these changes, even though it washes out, is that gonna create a problem for us? Next budget year as far as showing the expenditure and not counting the revenue to the year after?
I know, we actually, we don't receive the revenue until July because the program doesn't end till the end of June, but we put in accrual in. So we actually record the revenue in June, this fiscal year.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
Have any other questions? Vote please.
Six yeses.
Next one is one forty-two. Um, so those are just minor amendments in the federal funds, uh, that we've received. Y'all had already approved majority of them back in December, but then there's been some minor changes, um, just over the last few months. Um, so that's what that is.
Questions about the amendments for the one forty-two fund? We will do one seventy-seven with the.
Yeah, we can go ahead. So with one seventy-seven, you'll see the amended. So for some reason, when this budget was passed last year, um, there was revenue left in the budget and that shouldn't have been there. Um, so I've removed that. Um, because we weren't gonna have any more transfers in that was transferred in the year prior. Um, and should have rolled into fund balance. So that's just a minor correction. And then I also reclassified the land out of other capital outlay into land. That way it's more evident for the auditor. So those are the only two minor changes there.
Have any questions about one forty-two and one seventy-seven?
What's the total number on the one forty-two? That were amending?
Um, it looks like a lot, but I should have, I guess, changed my budget for twenty-four, twenty-five to the December amended amount. And so it's very, it was like three thousand dollars, the difference between what you approved in December and what she, what is presented this time. And C T U received an additional allocation of like. Three thousand or something, yeah, so. It was very minor.
We have a motion to approve the one forty-two and the one seventy-seven. Also. Second. Have a motion in a second to approve the one forty-two and the one seventy-seven budget amendments. Vote please.
Six yeses.
Next, we have teacher bonus resolution. How many?
Yeah, more members, uh, if, if you recall last month, we brought this up and, and there was a suggestion made that I might clarify it sort of. Um. To better state the will of the board. Uh, the one that says state teacher bonus V two, uh, is the one that has the red lines on it. And you can see the changes that I made to it. There is one, I, I've got an extraneous and, uh, in before the therefore clause, which I'll, I'll take out. But I'm happy to answer any questions or we can make changes or additions, uh, at the board's pleasure.
Questions for Mr. Hall?
Looking for a motion to approve. I have to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve the resolution in a second. Any other questions or discussion? Vote please.
Six yeses.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hall. Next, we have under maintenance approval of Centennial Elementary School gym and cafeteria HVAC.
All members, the same thing we talked about at the work session the other night, Stuart Burns just asked them for approval on the, uh. H V A C project at Centennial. An amount of one million, one hundred sixty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Um. Valerie and I met, that will pretty well deplete the, uh, capital outlay fund for this year. Um. We figured fifty thousand dollars contingency in that bid in case they run in any hiccups. We had to lower that about twelve thousand dollars, twelve thousand-ish. And then we can complete that job with capital outlay funds.
Thiel? So maybe I have no questions?
Second.
Any questions? We have a motion in a second to approve. The, uh, Centennial Elementary School gym and cafeteria HVAC upgrades for one million, one hundred sixty-four thousand, four hundred thirty-nine dollars. Vote please.
Six yeses.
Motion carries. So we have trash compactors.
All members, the next thing in front of you is a cost that's on one trash compactor. We're asking for the approval of three that will come out of the regular maintenance budget. I think you guys know we lost all that in next year's budget. And, uh, meeting with Valerie, we've found a little money in the regular maintenance budget. We know for sure we can purchase two of them, uh, with your approval this month. Very satisfied we can get the other one next month. As long as Ms. Valerie agrees with me next month. But it had to be approved tonight so that we could get it in this year's budget. So that total would be a hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-three cents. That's for up to three. And by two this month, if you approve it, and one next month.
Mr. Haley?
I understand you're right that, um, Mr. Valerie says the money remains in your budget already for that without an amendment, the third will be bought. And should something happen, it's been before you, right?
Wouldn't take any additional amendments. Um, we, we wanna get about, I think it's part of the way into next month or halfway through next month before we purchase that third one, just in case there's any hiccups.
Make to approve. Have a motion to approve it in a second to purchase up to three trash compactors. Vote please. Thank you.
Six yeses.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have under technology, the cops grant, Mr. Hall?
All members, if you all recall, um, two or three months ago, you all approved a contract, uh, for the SIM company to apply for the cops grants. Where upgraded security cameras and those sorts of things. And at that time, I, I told you all I had some contract issues to work out. Um, as it, as it turned out, uh, we just had to turn this into a grant writing contract. Uh, and, and so there is no obligation to, uh. The district or, uh, if we do not get the grant. Uh, and we won't have to pay for the grant writing if we. Use the train company off of a, um, purchase contract or a bid contract. Um, but should we use another supplier, then we would have to pay for the grant writing that the company did. To get us the award of the grant. And that amount exceeds, uh, the director's, uh, single authority. So, and that amount would be thirty-five thousand dollars. I need approval for, I mean, just. I think I probably technically have approval, but I, I just wanted to bring it back and let, let you all know and sign off on then. A thirty-five thousand dollar potential grant writing calls. If we were awarded the grant and didn't use the company that wrote the grant.
Am I right in saying, well, I mean, the company that's writing the grant, that's, that's the company that we kind of was looking at in previous years anyways?
That's correct, and, and that's the company that already has a lot of our, the halo.
That's what I thought.
Vate technology. And all of this technology integrates with that.
Do you look, um, for approval for that contract?
That is correct.
I'm moved to approve the contract.
Have a motion to approve in a second for the cops grant contract. Any other discussion? Vote please.
Six yeses.
Motion carries. Next, we have human resources. So we have our regular monthly reports of, uh, retirements, resignations, leaves of absence. Non-renewals, dismissals, hires, transfers, assignments and reassignments. Along with the monthly report from last month where you see the graphics of how many resignations, uh, and people that left. The additional document this month is the recommendations for tenure. This is the same list that we looked at it, the planning session with an addition of one more name. So there's one name that has been added since the, the planning session. Other than that, the document is the same.
Has any of these names been put on our resignation list?
Not to my knowledge, no sir.
I would like to read the retirements.
Thank you.
Anita Hartsfeld, instructional coach at my elementary, thirty-one years. Judy Wong, special education teacher, Charlotte Elementary School, thirty-two years. Linda McKinley, education assistant, N D A, uh, D L A, twenty-five years. Barbara Scott, first grade teacher, Van Lear Elementary, two years. Sue Stringfield, principal, Van Lear Elementary School, thirty-one years. Vicky Whitwell, speech language pathologist, Dixon Middle School, sixteen years. We want to, we appreciate their service and we wish them well. We did get to go to Ms. Sue Stringfield's retirement party celebration and it was lovely. Her staff did a really great job.
We need a motion to approve ten. Also. Okay. We have a motion in a second to approve the recommendations for tenure. Any other discussion? Vote please.
Six yeses.
Motion carries. Next, we have school nutrition. Price changes.
Members of the board, we are asking for approval. To raise our breakfast cost to two dollars, lunch to three dollars and fifty cents, and adult cost to five dollars for the twenty-five, twenty- for the twenty-five, twenty-six year.
How much of a raise is this?
I think it is fifty cents.
On, on all three of them?
Yes.
Thank you. I assume the budget has that in there already?
Yes.
Is that what y'all were anticipating on just getting approved? Play next time, bro.
I move for approval. We have a motion to approve. The food price changes in a second. Any other discussion? Vote please.
Six yeses.
Motion carries. Next, we have student services. Field trips.
Madam Chair Board, Creekwood High School, a debt leadership challenge would like to go to Greenville, Kentucky. June third through the seventh. Creekwood Dance Team. June tenth through the thirteenth at Tennessee Tech University Cheer Camp. Volleyball team at Creekwood. Would like to go July the eleventh through the thirteenth to the University of Mississippi for camp. Creekwood Cheer Camp. July eighth through the eleventh, Tennessee Tech University. Dixon County High School Cheer Camp, Auburn University, July eighth through the eleventh. Soccer tournament, Smoky Mountain Cup. August the twenty-second through August the twenty-fourth, Gatlinburg Lady Cougar Soccer Team. Rocky Top Classic Volleyball Tournament. Dixon County High School. Sevierville. September the thirteenth. And Creekwood Hosa International Leadership Gaylord Opryland Hotel, June seventeenth through the twenty-first. Lots of exciting places. I ask that you approve these overnight trips.
Move to approve.
Second. Have a motion to approve these field trips in a second. Any other discussion?
I had one comment. Yeah. Mine'd be multiple volleyballs, but one of them actually says parents are driving and our parent approved eating. Back to that conversation we've had before, just to be sure following policy.
Yes, parents have to take their own children.
They're also taking others, so just that we're following our own policy on that approval and the volleyball.
I'll double check that and then you can approve it on mine, checking it.
Any other questions? We have a motion in a second to approve the field trips with Dr. Sutcliffe checking on the volleyball transportation. Vote please.
Six yeses.
Motion carries. Next, we have under administration policies.
It's me and the first two under second read, four-two-zero-two-one, we're striking that. And then four-two-zero-five, there have been no changes from the first read or since the planning session.
Must be approved both of them?
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve four-point-two-zero-five and to strike four-point-two-zero-two-one. Any other discussion? These are second read. Vote please.
Six yeses.
Motion carries. Next, we have first read policies.
It's me and the first one, four-two-zero-one-one regarding class size ratios. Nothing has been changed on it since the planning session.
Want to go through them all and approve them all at one time, Ms. Brogdon, or you want individual approvals?
We can do them all.
Okay, I'll keep going. Four-six-zero-three, permission retention. At the planning session, Mr. Hall suggested a couple of changes. So if you look on the last page of that policy, lines two and three, five days were changed to ten days. And on line seven, the appeal to the director of schools, the words director, to the director of schools were added. Six-four-zero-zero-one. The change here is that parents have to give explicit permission before students participate in the survey. No changes since the planning session. Six-five-zero-three and six-five-zero-five kind of together in that TSBA had recommended in six-five-zero-three, that students who are in foster care awaiting a placement in a home are not considered homeless. And then they recommended we adopt a policy solely focused on students in foster care, which is six-five-zero-five. There have been no changes to those policies since the planning session.
Do we have any questions about any of the first read policies?
Motion to approve. If you want me to read the numbers out or you can at the end.
I can read them out.
Thank you. Smoke better.
A second. We have a motion in a second to approve policy four-point-two-zero-one-one, four-point-six-zero-three, six-point-four-zero-zero-one, six-point-five-zero-three, and six-point-five-zero-five on first read. Any other discussion? Vote please.
Six yeses.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have five-year strategic plan.
Madam Chair Board members, we we have looked at this plan. We will continue to update it. It's a moving document. It never stays the same. We are asking for the approval for the twenty-four through twenty-nine, but this has to be touched frequently. And often, we did correct some grammatical corrections on this strategic plan. When we do update it, I will bring it back to the board. As time progresses, we'll probably look at it in a couple of months going into the twenty-five, twenty-six year. And after we come together collectively as a team to discuss any new goals that we will have moving forward. Yes, ma'am.
On page sixteen. Provided district level resource officer for the Board of Education. I know that's our goal. But I was just saying that, I was thinking that perhaps we should say explore the addition of a district level resource officer for the Board of Education as funding becomes available. Language of that type. Also, I still have the same question about the summer feeding program. I just want to make sure that we do that as funding allows.
Okay.
It might also be a good idea if we might put the year under increased breakfast participation to forty percent in each school if you have. If you want to do that in three years or, I know this is a change in the document, but to give.
Well, we definitely want to do it within the five years this plan is written. But we could say increase. I know what you're, I know what you're saying.
We, you know, are getting closer to where we are with our budget of what we're.
Yes.
You know, we're trying to make it if we have a year there. But I do want to express my appreciation to you and the staff for all the work that you've done on that because I think it is an excellent representation of what Dixon County is and what we hope to be in the next five years.
Thank you, and, and I thank the staff. I will make these corrections tomorrow and I will get that out. And, but we do need an approval tonight. Yes, ma'am.
I would like to move to approve the Dixon County Schools Strategic Project Year Plan.
We have a motion in a second to approve the strategic plan with, with the changes. But first, I don't want to make any other discussion. Vote please.
Six yeses.
Motion carries. Next, we have director's report.
It's been a busy day. I've been in Murfreesboro this morning watching Creekwood and Dixon County High School play ball. Very proud of both softball teams. It was good crowd. Both teams represented well. Beautiful day to play ball. Dixon County High School failed to their first game. Creekwood won, went on to play a little after eleven and they lost. I forget who they lost to, but both of those teams, sir.
Gibbs, I believe.
Gibbs. Both of those teams did an outstanding job representing Dixon County school system. Very proud of them. We had a successful teacher banquet, two successful graduations. Very impressed by these young men and women. Very impressed by one young man that got accepted into West Point. And he stood very proudly at Dixon County High School. I was also very impressed with our students at Creekwood that received, three of our students received associate's degrees. All of the speeches. Well spoken. These young students made me very proud. What I did notice for the first time, sitting on stage, looking at those young people at Creekwood, the whole first row were crying. Change is hard, boys and girls. But I think they, it was a surreal moment for them, knowing that my career at Creekwood High School was coming to an end of being a student, but then the realization that a new part of my life begins. And so they were in the moment. As far as Dixon County High School, we kept watching the cloud above us. That was very dark. But we made it through that ceremony. Dr. Duke did an outstanding job of moving that ceremony very quickly. Lots of folks there, looked like about three thousand folks. We were proud of parents and all who came out to celebrate that. I met with the community leadership team this Tuesday. We had great conversations on a system is designed to get its own outcomes. If you think about that, that's powerful and we talk about that. And we also spoke about our people are our greatest competitive advantage. And so moving into the twenty-five, twenty-six year, what we're really going to hone on, hone in on as a district. And that's going to be our people and doing the things very strategically. Not putting any new things on the plate, but doing what we're doing, really focusing on it, doing it well. And so I will be speaking to both our elementary and secondary divisions in July and moving forward into the twenty-five, twenty-six year. We spoke about ACT and the great work that the students were doing and Dr. Marvin working with the Goodlark Foundation with the program Magouche. Our students completed one hundred and eighty-five thousand lessons for ACT. Wow, impressive. And so if you look at the, and I can share this with you, I failed to put it in my packet to have you look at. But their pre-test was at a sixteen point two for the district at Creekwood and sixteen point, maybe six or seven at Dixon County High School. Their average ended up being eighteen point four with just the juniors that took that ACT test. So we are moving in the right direction. We are going to hone in on how we use Magouche for the twenty-five, twenty-six year and we will share that probably in July. They are going to continue to partner with us, so I appreciate the Goodlark Foundation. I have up here two wonderful CTE newsletters that I would like to pass around. That's one for Dixon and Creekwood. And Ray and his team have done an outstanding job. Many of you know that Ray will be leaving us in eight and a half days, Ray? So he's changed that. Well, we are so appreciative of Ray and the work that he has done in CTE. This newsletter represents us well, Creekwood and Dixon County High School. And we will send those to you electronically. We, let's see, let me find my notes. I spoke to the Goodlark Foundation Tuesday evening at the hospital. That was a great audience and they were so excited about where our students were headed with ACT and the district focus. So it's been very busy this week or the last couple of weeks. We appreciate Dr. Allen. When I heard about that good word from Pat Manley, it just, it just made me get very excited and I just appreciate you taking the time to work with our students. So thank you so much. That's it.
Next, we have comments by DCA.
Good evening. Those of you playing at home, my name is Carrie Joyce and I am president of the Dixon County Education Association. As this is the last board meeting of the regular school year, DCA wants to thank all school employees for their commitment to the students of Dixon County Schools. It takes all of us, parents, working with teachers and administrators, cafeteria staff. It takes all of us, parents, working with teachers and administrators, cafeteria staff, bus drivers, custodians, and maintenance staff in order to educate our over 8,000 students. We want to thank Dr. Sutherland and her staff and this board for your transparency and your open communication. And there has never been a time when our questions were unanswered. And we realize that not every association has that wonderful working relationship with their board and their director. And we are incredibly grateful that we have that and we consider that to be one of the wonderful selling points of Dixon County Schools. We also want to thank the PECA Committee for their collaboration, which is going to be ongoing throughout June. Some of the happenings around the district, the Discovery School reported a record turnout for their Living History Day. NDA made cards for their beloved substitute, Mr. G., Mr. Gordon Edmond, who was in a terrible car accident. And when his daughters came up from Texas, they were so comforted and impressed that there were so many cards from NDA. They just wanted to tour the school and wanted to meet the wonderful staff and the kids that were so loving and compassionate to their father. So we think that's a wonderful expression of Dixon County. Dixon Middle School did a Lays for Layton fundraiser to support Layton Bustos, who is currently fighting cancer. She's at Dixon Middle School. And the Discovery School sold dollar hearts for Affinity Briceau, who is going to be having a heart transplant tomorrow morning. And we would ask that you please keep that little girl and her family in your thoughts and prayers at this time. DCA was honored to host the Second Annual Future Teachers of America Signing Day. 16 young women and two young men committed to studying education in college. We will look forward to the one day that when we call them colleagues. Of those 18 future teachers, we awarded two $1,000 scholarships. One to Miss Haley Braddy of Creekwood High School, who's going to be majoring in special education. And one to Miss Vanessa Garcia Martinez of Dixon County High School. He is going to be majoring in Spanish education. So that's all I have. And we thank you for a wonderful school year and we wish everyone a relaxing and rejuvenating summer break.
Thank you, Carrie.
Next we have comments by board members.
I'll go first. Just a clerical correction. You said well over 8,000 students. We're well below 8,000 students. We're like a 75. Probably low. 77? Okay, 77. We ain't been over 8,000 in 15 years. But.
Then Google needs to be updated. They need to set in web.
432. So I know I get a little upset when it comes to some of our classified employees and their money. I don't want to just beat a horse, but I feel like I got to beat the horse because I don't know that my, my point always gets across. Or maybe it does get across and everyone's like, you'll forget about it next year maybe. And I've been forgetting about it for three years. We did, we worked really, really hard and had a long time to get that nutrition onto our classified pay scale, which was a really big step for them. And that whole idea behind that was to, when we gave a classified employee a raise, the nutrition would get it. Because we were misinformed years ago that every employee that's not a certified teacher is a classified employee. And you found out nutrition wasn't in there. They wasn't part of everyone. So now they're part of everyone. But there's things in the budget and it gets, I look back and I wish things would go different and I wish we could have done a whole lot of things different. And I'm just going to use one example. You know, we were trying to put those trash compacters in our budget. Somehow, we found the money in our current budget. We were trying to put them in next year's budget. They were in there. And we found it in this year's budget. They didn't need to go in next year's budget. But that's 30, how much did we, 30,000, 30 some thousand? That's, that's another employee. That's more than, that's another employee that is more than half of that pay scale doesn't make that much money. We were trying to put that money in our budget to buy trash compacters. We already had it. Up to three. We'll know next month if we get the third one. But we currently already got it. That's a whole employee. More than a whole employee. So I think about things like that and I, you know, I always hate to raise the lunch money. I think, I wish we could give everybody free lunch. I hate to raise it at all. I hate to raise it a quarter. But sometimes food cost goes up, but our employees got to go, they have to get those raises too. And I want that motivation. I want, I mean, I'm super glad that we're going to be well above the state minimum pay for our teachers. But I wish the state would come through and say, we need state minimum for bus drivers. We need state minimum for this. We need state minimum for that. Somehow I bet we would find the money. Because we, we can find it if we look for it in different ways, just to take care of everybody as a whole. Because we're finding it for our teachers. I'm glad we are. I'm stoked that we are. We're going to find more for them next year. We got to get at least 300 bucks, right? But we're going to find it. We're going to get them well above state minimum. And I hope we can bring our classified employees the same big jumps that we're giving to others. Thank you.
On a much lighter note, I would just like to say that the Charlotte Middle School softball team did win the state championship last week. And so we are very proud of them and all their efforts and work that they did in order to win that award.
I spoke with Coach Maddie today and so very proud of her. She was one of our grow your own apprentices. So very proud of Maddie.
I too am concerned about the pay scales that we have. Because I know when we look at the HR report, there are always several saying they're leaving for non-education jobs with higher pay or they're going to other counties with higher pay. And I think we need to do as much as we can for our teachers and the bus drivers, everybody. But I think we've had a pretty good year and we get some of these things under our belt and move into next year and try to do better.
Let everybody have a good year. Enjoy summer.
I like that quote Mr. Parker says, but I think this year's budget really gave us all a chance to delve into it. And it's, it's nice to see the involvement with that. First year for a director to address that. That was fun, wasn't it? And but I think it's an opener for, for a lot of avenues on us paying attention and what we want to build on. So I think there was some progress made from that this year. I think that's a good thing. I had to go over to the school board Tuesday night and heard the board members making a comment at the end talking about graduation. It really sunk into me that he said he went to every graduation in that community, which was multiple schools. And the reason he went was because that's the milestone that we work for every day to graduate them, to graduate them and to celebrate with them. So I haven't been one in years. It almost embarrassed me. I didn't go to one. But for those of y'all that make it, it's a big, it's a big step. They didn't just graduate and get out of school. They made a huge milestone in life. So it needs to be recognized. Every, every month we had people come to us and the kids and always impressed by what we see. But Dr. Allen, the kids you brought today were very impressive. And I think what really struck me is just the bring up minds that, that exists on lots of levels. Those are some, some great kids and you have a great program. And your mother was a teacher in Dixon, was it Miss Frances Allen?
Yes.
She was my teacher and when I saw you speaking, I could see a lot of her. It's a sign that I'm getting old too. But she, she, she made a mark on me as a teacher back in the early 80s. There's someone else in this room. She also made an impression. I won't give her age away this off. But you know, it clicked to you or them, but good work and I appreciate you being in the community and what you do for those kids. Thank you.
I also had Miss Allen and Miss Manley. They were the best teachers ever. I learned a lot. Math, they made math fun. So loved it. I want to thank all of you sitting in here who have worked so hard on the budget this year. It's been a struggle this year. We know everyone had to make hard cuts. We're hoping for a better year next year. But we appreciate all the hours that you've put in and we appreciate the teachers and all the work this year. We hope they all have a good summer and get ready to come back next year and be even better.
That's right.
And thank you, Dr. Sutherland. It's been, I don't know how you attend and do everything that you do. But you've done a great job this school year and we really appreciate the work you put in.
Thank you. We're going to even get better.
Any other comments?
Most approve.
Thank you.
Okay, we can all this.